601, January 25th, 2023. I'm going to call to order the business meeting of the Hastings Independent School District School Board. I'd like everybody to, oh, we do attendance first. Director Byssell, will you please take attendance?
Director Zuzik?
Here.
Director Dresley?
Here.
Chair Hadeen?
Here.
Vice Chair Malm?
Here.
Director Davis?
Here.
Director Tate?
Here.
Director Byssell? Here.
Thank you. Please stand if you are able, remove your head covering, and we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Director Davis, second Director Malm. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from the January 11th, 2023 organizational meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Move Director Dresley, second Director Malm. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approval of the minutes of the January 10th? 11th? Did that just change? Or did I misread it? January 11th, 2023 organizational meeting? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. I'd like to recognize our visitors, both those in person and those in attendance through Hastings Community TV. We really appreciate you taking your time, whether you're live or you're watching this later, to participate in the process of governing our school district and in turn improving our community. Thank you very much for your time. This time, we'll move to announcements and recognition. Superintendent McDowell.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to bring up Abby Meyer from the Hastings Rotary and Scott Doran, our high school principal, because we would like to acknowledge a growing strength in our partnership with the Hastings Rotary and their Student of the Month program. So we'd like to highlight a couple of our students tonight. Looks like I'm going to turn it over to Abby first.
Thank you, and thanks to the school board for allowing us time to recognize these amazing students. I'm here to present to you the Student of the Month winners so far this year. The criteria for the Student of the Month, it is selected by, and Mr. Doran will give you a little bit more detailed description of how the nominations are processed at the high school, but the criteria that we as Rotary provide is that they get involved in various school and other related service type groups. They take a leadership role among their peers. They diligently work to ensure success for themselves and others, and they exemplify our Rotary four-way test, which of the things we think, say, or do, is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships, and will it be beneficial to all concerned? So our winners to date for the 2022-2023 school year are Heaven Herman, Ian Pepple, Emma McClay, and Kaitlyn Rudd. And Ian and Kaitlyn are here, I think Emma's on her way from, and Heaven are on their way maybe from Choque Choir, so hopefully they will be here momentarily. But it's been an honor to be able to represent Rotary for the Student of the Month and hear all of the exciting things that these kids are doing, and despite the adversity they've had throughout their high school careers and things that they have faced, they've stepped up between link leaders, peer helpers, and tutors. They were in student council, their leadership councils, Avid, the Writing Center, Choque Choir, and various athletic teams. So it's just an honor to see that continue throughout the community as a community member and a former Hastings High School alumni. I just think it's really important we recognize those things, and that is why we are here today. So, Mr. Doran, if you had anything else?
Just the selection process. We, we send an email out each month, oh, thanks, to all of our staff members for nominations, and it's a, it's a heavy competition. So, number of nominations come in each month. We vet those through our counseling staff, administrative staff, maybe go back to ask teachers for a little clarification and then make a selection. And my job is the greatest job in the world. I get to embarrass these students in front of their peers. The next selection will be at our Snow Week coronation. It's a pep fest on Friday, I believe it's February 10th, so that'll be a big announcement to a big crowd. So what I would love to do, if you guys have a few minutes, we'll let these two winners, let us know a little bit about themselves outside of maybe what you've read here and what their future plans are. Ian, you were the October, so you can go first if you don't mind.
Hello. My name is Ian Pepple. I'm a senior at Hastings High School, and some of you might know, I have an older brother at Godsville who's in college right now. And of course, I'm a part of Hastings, I'm the captain, and I'm in also football as well, a bunch of other clubs. And I just want to say thank you for having this honor to come up here. You guys congratulating us, it means a lot to us. And my future plans this year, I plan to attend college four years, plan to go pursue a major in nursing, and after that, plan to go get my master's degree and start nursing.
Hi, I'm Kaitlyn. Um, let's see, I've done a lot of work with the Writing Center. This past semester, I did an independent study with them, and it was just so amazing to spread the word about the Writing Center, because a lot of people forget about it from ninth grade to 12th grade. And I actually did love the marketing part of that aspect of that. So I'm actually going to continue my education at Winona for marketing and business, and thank you for this honor. I'm sorry, what? Yes.
Emma showed up.
And and Emma's going to come straight to the seat and tell us a little bit about herself and what her plans are for next year. Just, this is a little insight probably into each and every one of these students' lives, right? Anybody that's getting that Rotary scholarship is disengaged in the community where it's, this is their lives, and they love it, and they're bright, and we are so thankful to have them and their skills and talents in our community.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was just at Choque Choir practice, so that's why I was running a little bit behind, but thank you for having me here tonight.
Can you tell us a little bit about what grade you're in and what your plans are going forward?
Yeah, so I'm a senior at Hastings High School, and then, oh, my name's Emma McClay, by the way. And then my plans going forward, I haven't decided on a college yet, but I am going to college, and right now I'm applied as an English major to be an employment lawyer, so yeah.
And just so you guys know, because I'm going to embarrass Emma for a second, last night was the preview show for Choque Choir, and they absolutely killed it, and they're performing for their first competition on Saturday. Nice job, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thanks to all the teachers and Mr. Doran for everything they do, too.
Can you ask?
Please extend our sincere thanks to Heaven as well and for her accomplishments. That's, this is a huge achievement for all of you.
And I'd also like to extend the thanks on behalf of the school district and the board to the Rotary. I think I had an opportunity to say this a little bit in our, in the meeting that followed the Rivertown event, but thank you for seeing the students in our community for the asset that they are. Thank you for giving them opportunities to participate and to lead and to commit to that community. I think it's so valuable to students that the entire community sees them as an asset and looks forward to working with them, and so we appreciate that, creating those opportunities. And then I know that there's a financial commitment, I'm pretty sure, with this Rotary scholarship as well, and that's, I think that's immeasurable in what that can mean to us doing, and we really thank you for that. If, if Heaven does choose to come flying in even later, we might just make her come to the hot seat wherever she appears in the agenda. I'm, I'm holding the ability to flex the agenda to that degree, but it's understood if she doesn't as well, given the tricky roads. Next item on our agenda tonight is a listening session summary. Tonight, we did not have anybody attend our listening session, but we did have two board members here that were prepared to discuss that, and we'd certainly be open and welcome to anybody coming in the future. That was just our experience tonight. We'll next move on to reports and discussions, and I'd like to turn the microphone over to Superintendent McDowell.
Thank you. We're going to talk about some more kids. First of all, congratulations to our, another group of high school students who have been selected to represent Hastings High School at the MEC All-Conference Honor Choir, Honor Band, and Jazz Ensemble. The first event, which was a rehearsal, took place this last Monday, and next Monday, January 30th, the All-Conference Concert is held at St. Andrews Church in Modemidei. We have 14 students who have been selected for the either concert or jazz, and we have nine students that were selected for choir, so a really good showing again, and example of the good stuff that our kids are doing out and about. The second thing I want to remind people of is we have our middle school play taking place this weekend, right? 7:00 PM on the 26th and 27th. "An Absolutely True Story as Told by a Bunch of Lying Liars" is the title of this play, so very fitting for a middle school play. It looks like to be a lot of fun. This week is also Paraprofessionals Recognition Week, so I want to publicly thank all of our paraprofessionals for the vital roles that they play in ensuring our district continues to provide the highest quality of education for our students. And if you haven't done so, please, I recommend you check out the video that Carrie Gore put together about our paraprofessionals. You can see that either on our website or going to our Facebook page, but it's a great video and gives some insight into our, into our great paraprofessional group. Let's see, this Winter and Spring Community Education brochure is now out in hard copy, and the reason that I'm pointing that out is we've expanded that brochure. The back half of it includes stories from each of our buildings as well as our departments to give the community a little more insight into what's going on and how things work behind the scenes. And so if you haven't gotten a copy of that, feel free to stop by the district office or the Community Education Building Tilden to pick up a copy of that. And then finally, Countdown to Kindergarten is in progress, and registration is open, so families that are looking at how to register, go to our website, and everything is online, and if you have questions, call who you believe to be will be your building principal at the elementary school. And if that's not the right place, they'll get you straightened up, but just a reminder to families that are new to the district, we do not have centralized registration, and so we register new students at each of their buildings. So if you have questions, contact the building you believe your student will be at, and then again, if that's not correct, that front office or counseling department will get it straightened out for you and point you in the right direction. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair.
All right, terrific. Thank you, Superintendent McDowell. The next topic on our agenda is the Building Construction Fund project update. I anticipate seeing that up on the screen, and it'll be covered by Ms. Subert.
Thank you. So the Building Construction Fund again is the funds from the voter-approved bonds for school renovations and improvements. We do have a few new projects that were closed out, so in the top section of complete, we have the high school carpet, the middle school improvements, the high school retaining wall, and the middle school privacy improvements. So the biggest one to note there is the middle school improvements, about 23.8 million, and we had expected kind of all along that that budget was going to be really tight, but it was, we overspent by $12,000, so it's good news there. We do have two projects that moved into in-process, so the entrance security improvements and the interior locks allowance. As far as projects that are still in design, there's really just two, and it's the high school deferred maintenance and the monument signs. Yeah, feels good to be getting down there, so I can take questions if you have them.
Do we have any questions from the, from the board? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Subert. I will point out to the community, this is a detailed slide, and it may appear a little bit small. It is available on Board Book, which can be accessed through our website, and you can blow it up to your heart's content and look at the numbers in detail at that time. Our next topic is committee appointments. For those of you who listened in to our organizational meeting, and I say that only because I don't believe we had any community members present, although I know people were watching. The committee representative and representative assignments was provided out to the board at the end of last week, but we're just sharing it as an attachment tonight so that the community can see it, and this is available on our website going forward. And then, so these are our year-long committees, and of course, should we need a response to a particular topic of work, we'll just set that up and be sure to share that with the community at the time that that happens. Our next action item, or excuse me, not action item, our next agenda topic is the Policy Committee Report, and at this time, I'll turn the microphone over to Committee Chair Malm.
All right, so we met on January 17th. We had a pretty robust agenda along with a new member, Director Zuzik. So what I'm going to brief tonight, there have been a few changes over the last couple days with what was going to be on the agenda for tonight. So what is reflective on the summary, there have been a few modifications. So you'll see Policy 603, 604, 616 were originally on the agenda as a proposal to sunset. We need to bring that back to the committee for further review and deep dive into those. So for everybody's awareness, we have hundreds of policies out there, and they are all intertwined, so it takes a deep dive into cross-referencing, and does the statute reflect consistently from one policy to the next? So this is a month's long, sometimes it can take over a year, to review all the policies. We do like to try to bundle them within a particular series. The 200 series, for example, pertains to the board members, so you'll see different series, and they reflect a particular audience. So right now, we're, we're hopefully on the tail end of the 600 series review, and that's, we're hoping to close that out soon, but it could, when I say soon, because there are so many policies with that 600 series, it could take another few months. So those will go forward to the committee, and then we hope to bring that back for approval in the near future. You'll see 601, Policy 601, which is the school district curriculum and instructional goals. So this was purposely towards the tail end of 600, because a lot of the 600 series policies and other policies feed into 601, which is why it is so, it's a huge policy. So I did receive comments from Director Tate, thank you for those about 601. Those will go to the committee, so we've noted that information. But what we'd like to do tonight, you know, with the first read, it's to get feedback from the board on your thoughts with 601, and then we do have Rachel, was she, no, okay. But if there are any questions, so Ms. Larson is we'll bring it back, and, and yeah, yep, and she'll be able to provide additional feedback on that. 623, which is the mandatory summer school learning, so that is, it could be adopted tonight. The Policy Committee looked at it again on the 17th, and we did make a few proposed changes. So in Section 1, you'll see, it used to say like, okay, this is, this is what we're going to do, but because we don't have mandatory summer school, we, we're going to keep the policy or propose that we keep the policy, but changing that verbiage with the purpose to say if there's mandatory summer school, and then striking Sections 3 and 4, because if summer school becomes mandatory, we'll be addressing those specifically at that time. And then that led to a further conversation about potentially moving the MS, or removing the MSBA model policies, the references from the cross-references. I see benefit in having them in there, but at the same time, that, that's, how valuable is that for anybody except for, well, the Policy Committee when we're reviewing them? So, you know, I'm, I'm open to, the Policy Committee is very much open to, if we, if we find there's value with keeping the MSBA model policies in the cross-references, we can definitely continue doing that, or is it something that we want to just have ISD policies referenced in those cross-references? So getting into the minutia of policy development there. Policy 806, Crisis Management Policy, this is going to further review, and we intend to bring that to the committee within the next couple of months here. Policy 208 is ready for a second read. There were no changes. Policy 417, there were actually changes today, so if you take a look at those, it is reflective of a conversation that we had over the last couple of months, ready for adoption. Policy 722, Public Data Request, that is ready for adoption for tonight. And then we reviewed the three-year review cycle, and our goal, we're thinking, because the board has spoken to the Policy Committee, that we want, we really want to tackle this 200 series policies and then get into the procedures with the intent that the handbook will be updated and available for new members as they come in in this next election cycle. So we are going to take a look at the updated spreadsheet that Director Dresley has put a lot of time and effort and blood and sweat into creating, and make sure that we have a good way forward. Ideally, we have a 90-day plan or six, six months, which is kind of where we're looking already out at projecting into May. So January 31st and February 15th are our next meetings.
All right, thank you very much, Vice Chair Malm. Let me get back up to the right place here. Okay, with that, and I know this happens every time, you've turned off your mic, but now we're going to move towards first read discussions, and it sounds like we've maybe got into a stronger practice with, leave some insights, some comments have been provided with regard to first read, those just, those will go back to the Policy Committee, we don't have to review them in detail tonight. But the first policy for first read is 601, School District Curriculum Instructional Goals, and I would appreciate it if you could lead that conversation, see if there's any it if you could lead that conversation, see if there's any input that the board would like to give at this time beyond what's been provided electronically.
Yes, we did provide, or we did receive a little bit of input from Director Tate, and thank you for those comments. This policy, especially with 603, 604, and 616, well, and really 606, Policy 606, which is textbook and instructional materials, these are all very intertwined. So we wanted to get feedback tonight. This one will go back into another deep dive pretty significantly over the next few, I would project probably few, Policy Committee meetings. And then having Ms. Larson there too, to kind of walk us through. I'm actually thinking, you know, section by section to go through that because it is such a robust policy. So if there are any additional items that, you know, really popped out to you in this policy, I would open up for, for that conversation or that input.
Director Tate?
Yeah, I just like others' feedback on one of the items that I had brought forward. And that was the only, so this policy is very heavily focused on students who need extra help, which is fantastic. That's what we need to do. But the only place that we mention accelerating instruction or really pushing like the higher achievers is when we talk about gifted and talented. And I guess I'm proposing that we put maybe more language in to commit to making sure that we're, you know, pushing, pushing those kids to.
Does anybody have any thoughts on that regard? I would point out that, that that kind of discussion amongst board members is more of a work topic, work session kind of piece. Work at the, at a board table business meeting is more, you know, we provide input, we move towards action. But if somebody else would care to comment on that particular item or reflect on it and provide comments to the policy group prior to the 31st of January, that would be another way of sharing your thoughts into the discussion. Director Malm?
So we received your notes this afternoon, and then I did send it to Ms. Larson. So she has, she has that particular comment. Just reflecting on that comment right now, I wonder if maybe there's another policy that isn't in front of us. So that is something that Ms. Larson would be able to shed a little bit of light on. Thank you.
Director Zuzik?
Just for the public's benefit, in Board Book, if there's a document referred to as the Policy Committee, it says Policy Committee mission at the top, and it's the meeting minutes from our meeting. And I, it is really hard when you're looking at policies that have the degree of redundancy that these policies have, to sort through it without something to look at. And so I just want to commend the people that worked on this prior to me getting involved because they dropped breadcrumbs really showing which of the 601 went to, or which of 603 went to 601, and where is it in that policy? Where are the elements from 604? Where are the elements from 606, 616? And, and it's really, that's, that's an awful lot of background work. I do think that it's a good idea to couple it all together. And, and I'm glad that we did that, or that, I'm glad that we're intending to do it. But I just wanted to help the public try to figure out, where can I find out more? And that's, that document really shows the map. And then all school board policies are found on the website under School Board. And then there's a policy is a click away. Thank you.
Thank you for reminding people that and for calling out the clarity of these, of the policy minutes. It's a very complex committee. And, and should you want to go back through Board Book and look at the history of those minutes, it's, I think it's as clear as it can be. I think it's, it's challenging stuff. And should somebody be interested in seeing what are the proposed changes? So on the district website, if you go, get down to school board policies and read them, that's our current practice. That's our current policies. If you're looking at and saying, all right, so what's the proposal? What are we thinking about? I, I want to think more about what Director Tate just raised. You would go through Board Book and look at it. And you can see up here on the screen that, that a tracking changes kind of practice is used. So it's really, you know, if you're, if you're an at-home policy wonk, it's a pretty straightforward way to, there is laughter amongst the crowd. It's a pretty good way to see where it is in the process. And if you want to weigh in on that process, if you have an opinion on that process, it would certainly be welcome. So those are the two places where you can see our current practice and then the kind of ongoing proposed discussions, the two different places that those are. All right. Hearing no further input on the 601, move to the next item in the agenda, which is a second read for Policy 208, Development, Adoption and Implementation of Policies. Director Malm?
Sure. No proposed changes from this last time. I know there, there was a little bit more discussion about, once we dive into the 200 series policies, maybe taking a look at 208 and revamping a few things. But you'll see here, we did, because the track changes are on there right now, this is what we are proposing after today's second read. There can be a motion to push that for adoption next month. Pending any questions, I'd like to open it up to the table, please.
Director Tate?
I guess I had voiced it last month. I'm just very concerned about not clarifying the comments around, public comment and public input are both mentioned. And I'm just, I'm uncomfortable about letting that go through because this section is for the public. It's supposed to direct the public. And since we don't have a clear public comment portion of our meetings, I think that that, it's, it's not clear to the public how they can actually provide that input.
I would like to counterpoint. We do have a clear public input practice. It's in Policy 206 and involves a listening session. All board members are also available to be contacted by email or phone. So that's, that's not a completely accurate statement. As that topic was raised at the previous meeting, was it discussed at policy? I see no changes were brought forward. Would you care to elucidate on that, Director Malm?
Yeah, we, we thought, we noted it. And then as we go into the 200 series review, hopefully we can get 206 resolved and then see 208 reflect that similar verbiage. We also thought too, that pub, you know, the, because words matter, and I say that a lot, but it, in this instance, public comment versus public input, is that going to create more confusion? So I would like to, to kind of see 206 get revamped. And then really, we wouldn't have to change the public comment verbiage. And here it would just stay as is. But I think that's a further discussion as we dive into that 200 series.
Is there any further discussion at the table? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to move Policy 208, Development, Adoption and Implementation of Policies to an action item at our February business meeting. I don't have the date for the
Second, Zuzik?
Thank you. Motion Director Beisel, Second Director Zuzik. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next topic on the agenda tonight is currently named Additional Reads. These are, I'd be open to hearing anybody who wants to come up with a better topic name. It was not my best moment. But it's policies that have come through at least a second reading and they're back for a third or higher reading. And we wanted to call that out so that should there be an interest in moving it to an action item tonight, that would, that would fall within our current practice. It doesn't need to happen, but that's why it's differentiated from the second readings part of the topic. So that's our little side. And at this time, I would ask Director Malm to take over for a discussion on Policy 623, Mandatory Summer School Instruction.
All right. So the last time we discussed this policy, there were no changes. However, the Policy Committee, upon further reflection of this one, thought, you know, maybe we need to make a few changes. So you'll see the purpose in there. It's highlighted in purple. That is a modification because we don't have mandatory summer school. If we do implement this policy further, we'll have to go back and take a look at adding in. So there was, sorry, it's really small for me to see. Section 3 and 4 were struck. So then, in the event of mandatory summer school, we would go back and then implement those.
3 and 4.
Correct. If that makes sense.
Director Zuzik?
And my recollection, just for further clarification, was that the reason for separating out 3 and 4 is that they are really procedural. And if we want to separate procedural from policy, it's, it's best that we, you know, wait for the procedure to be developed if we implement mandatory summer school. And it, and the notation at the top is just that, that we would, I think it's worth noting this or to make the public aware that if the district were to implement mandatory summer school, then this is the policy that we would go to. And it's good to not throw the policy out because it's good work that's been done. So I think it's good to, to keep it together. Thank you.
Director Tate?
Just one clarifying question. You had alluded to removing the cross references before. Is that the intent for this one? Because it's not in the, in the markup.
I would recommend that you remove the references that say MSBA model policies, simply because you don't follow all of the verbiage in the model policies. And so as you approve them, if it's going to become your cross reference, it really should be cross referencing something that is in line with what you're doing. So that would be my recommendation is once you move, once you move the policy and you're no longer following MSBA model policy, now you're following your own policy and reference it that way.
Thank you. Right, Vice Chair Malm?
Thank you for clarifying that. You said a lot better than I did. So like, when we go back to review 623 in the future, we would, we, very often in policy, we take a look at MSBA's model policy. So when we were to take a look at our ISD 200 623, we would also take a look at MSBA's 623 model policy. And at the bottom there, it would have those cross references too. So if that, because I, I feel like maybe the concern might be, well, for future reference, how are we going to know what cross references are in here? And we would just refer back to that MSBA model policy 623.
Director Dressley?
So we are taking the MSBA cross references off of our, am I understanding that correctly?
So we're, this is where I understand it stands right now. So we are not at an action place. We're at a discussion place. And should, should this either be moved to an action tonight or tomorrow, that could, could certainly be considered in the, in the motion. It could also come forward, should, should there be a choice not to take action on that particular question tonight, it could come forward in future policies for action from the Policy Committee. Although I honestly saw quite a bit of head nodding around the table as the point was discussed. If we, once we deviate from a model policy, that it may no longer be valuable to cross reference it. Superintendent McDowell?
I would add one exception. There are going to be circumstances where the district does not have an MSBA policy of such number. In that case, you would still see MSBA model policy, because you were probably referencing that. Policy XXX, well, we don't carry that policy. It's not a mandatory policy. It's not a required policy. But some of whatever's in this policy has been cross referenced back to that, and that is still in play. It's just not part of this group's current work. So you, you could have a situation, I guess, where you have a MSBA policy and ISD 200 policies as cross reference.
Is there any further discussion on 623 Mandatory Summer School Instruction? I would entertain a motion at this time to move this policy to an action item. Should that, that motion, I think, could consider action tonight, or it could consider action in February, because this is a post-secondary reading? I don't like that any better than additional, but we're going to settle on something there. So I would entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Okay, what are you moving? Could you clarify that for me?
To move this to Policy 623 to an action item.
Would you, would you speak to the question of the cross references?
And also delete the cross references to MSBA model policies for this policy.
All right. So we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that to Director Beisel. I don't know why, but I just, so motion, Director Dressley, Second Director Beisel, to move Policy 623 Mandatory Summer School Policy Instruction to an action item tonight, striking the cross references to MSBA model policies. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Our next item for discussion and potential consideration for action is the 2023 Board Legislative Platform. This is an example to me of our board growing in its maturity. Last year, a board chose to send a single letter to the legislature, and we worked on that action and agreed on that statement. We've moved in advance to a place where we're considering having a board legislative platform, which would allow us to be in a position to more actively engage in the legislative process. As we all know, the process is in place right now. There, there are bills being considered regarding specifically educational funding that are in play right now. So this is, the timeliness of this is high. We did discuss a potential platform for a fair amount of time at our work session that followed the organizational meeting earlier in January. And at that time, we discussed five potential bullet items. What we see here in the attachment and up on the screen is an expansion of those five items with some specific Hastings stories associated with them. I'd be interested at this time to hear if there's any additional discussion that members of the board would like to add to the discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago. Hearing none. I would encourage members of the public to, to take a look at this. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to move all or part of this legislative platform to an action item tonight.
I would move, Director Davis, to move all five bullet items in their entirety to an action item.
I would second. Zuzik?
We have a motion from Treasurer Davis, and a second by Director Zuzik, to adopt the 2023 Board Legislative Platform draft as a final. Is there any further discussion tonight? Director Tate?
Yes, just two weeks ago, I had expressed my concern with number four specifically, which is allow locally elected school boards to renew an existing operating referendum. So this is without a vote, a public vote. So that, that one is my, my concern that I, I can't support right now.
Okay. Do we have any further comment? Okay, I would say a couple of things. One, the current standing levies have been voter approved and everybody, with the exception of Superintendent McDowell sitting at this table, has been voter approved and will be again, or will have to seek voter approval. Cities and counties who are in a position of raising funds do, are not required to seek voter approval on their, on their pieces. That being said, I would consider it valuable if the board as a whole, meaning unanimously, could support the legislative platform. I'd be curious to hear discussion from other directors about how they feel that may or may not be important, and if there might be an interest in modifying. may not be important, and if there might be an interest in modifying the motion. Does anybody have any thoughts on that? I was looking down, so I'm going to go with Director Malm, mostly because I didn't pick her for the second on the last thing.
Thank you, Chair Hedin. No, and I totally understand where you're coming from, you know, there's hearing from the community with their vote is imperative, and that's how, I mean, that's the foundation of America as a whole. And I think it's important that, so how I foresee this happening, if this were to be something that passes in legislation, it's not that, I would, I would hope that there would be some forum that the community would come in and say, you know, we do want this or we don't want this, and provide valuable input for us to make a sound decision. And keep in mind too, that if legislation passes this, it's for the entire state, it wouldn't be just specific to Hastings. I see, one of my biggest frustrations is exactly what, and I was going to mention, what you had already said, Chair Hedin, is that we are one of the only bodies that has to go out for a vote to be able to run, or be able to, by running, for funding, to get funding to run public schools. And there's, we know that this is an investment, and it's not that we would be voting for more money, it would be to renew an existing operating referendum. So I see pros and cons in both of them, but I think it's something that I could, I could support, but I would want, you know, if it were to pass, I would want to see something where there's a robust, I don't know, a town hall for lack of better term, to be able to pull in community members on multiple occasions before we were to take a vote, so that they can weigh in before we make a decision.
Thank you, Director Malm. I'll come to you in just one second, Director Dresley. I would like to remind everybody at the table that the action that we're taking is, or that we're considering taking, is to say, what would the Hastings School Board, not of all the legislative actions that are going on with regard to education, but what would be our priorities and what could we speak in common on? So this isn't about whether we individually may or may not agree with a specific item, but to say, what are the, what are the top priorities to Hastings, and how can we lead a legislative engagement? And that actually speaks to the issue. We had a person speak to us in Truth and Taxation for the first time in quite some time, and spoke to that issue and the importance of us advocating on behalf of education as a whole. So again, let's keep in mind that the, just remind ourselves that the action tonight is to see what can the Hastings School Board, whatever the statutes may pass are, we will definitely comply with them and may go a step beyond. So, Director Dresley?
No, but you covered the things that I was going to say. Then the other thing that I, okay, I'll go with the one other thing. So I believe that it's important for our community to have a voice in that, so I agree with Vice Chair Malm that it would have to be a very robust conversation with all community members in order for us to make a valuable vote. And this is neither here nor there, because we're just talking about standing behind the legislative platform, so.
Yes, please, Director. Thank you, Chair Hedin. The, just another comment is that the ability to go out for a bond that already exists means that we're going out for dollars that we're already, that we've already historically asked for. The chances that this increases a person's taxation is very unlikely. And yet, in most circumstances, we have to state that this may have a deleterious impact on people's property taxes. And so, if the fair, if the game was set up fairly, I would, I would not be as strongly advocating as I am for this, because right now, the game is not set up fairly. We have to say, your taxes are likely going to increase, even though we know that to be incorrect, even though we know that to be false. And another key point is that this is a major part of the platform for both MSBA and AMSD, which are two groups that we lean heavily into, and know that they are advocating for this at the, at the Capitol already. So.
Director Bysel?
I just want to reiterate what I said at our work session. I think it's very important that we get education out to our community members as well, so I am all for all of the, all five of these. And if and when this passes, we, like I said, we educate our taxpayers, because it's already money that they're already giving, it's not increasing anything, it's stopping, but then adding it back, so it seems like an increase. But if we can do our diligence at the school board to educate everybody, stopping the rumors, that I think that would help immensely for all, and for the bonds and referendums coming up.
Is there any further discussion for the item on the table? Chair Davis? That's a flashback. Director Davis?
So, I do, I want to basically, I see exactly where Director Tate is going in her concerns over number four. I do agree with the group in general that it's going to really come down to ensuring, and a lot of it's under the committee assignments that I have, ensuring that we are making clear how that legislative platform is done, how it's set up, and why it's important to the community, and ensuring that we're the elected officials, so we have to operate in the best way we possibly can to make sure that the folks that put us in these seats know that they can trust, that come to them and say, hey, we're going to discuss this. To Director Malm's point, we could have these robust conversations around this town halls and things like that. Director Zuzik makes a very good point, that's an educational point. Here's what it's going to say on your poll. That is not the case. And here's facts and figures as to why we can show you that's not the case. Those are the types of things we're going to ensure we do, and I'm sure that as a group here and under the committees that we've got established, we'll be able to get that done. That's why I'm confident about number four. I don't disagree with Director, I'm just saying I think we can get the information out there appropriately.
Is there any further discussion at this time? Right, again, we have a motion on the table to move the draft 2023 Board Legislative Platform to an action item tonight? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay. We have six board members in favor, Director Bysel, Director Zuzik, Director Dresley, Director Hedin, Director Malm, and Director Davis, and voting nay at this time is Director Tate. We'll see that as an action item later. We are now at the part of our agenda where we are going to move to action items, and the first action item on the table is the consent agenda. At this time, I would entertain a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Davis.
Second, Dresley.
Is there any discussion with regard to the consent agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The consent agenda passes unanimously. We'll then move down to, excuse me, items for individual action. Our first item for individual action is to approve the revised 2022-2023 Polling Places Resolution. And at this time, prior to making a motion and reading the resolution, I'd like Superintendent McDowell to share some information as to why we're seeing that on our agenda again.
I think because we wanted Director Bysel to read it again.
A flip side, okay.
No, I think you can, when we get to that spot, I think you can, can read, or you can go as, yeah, as, as stated. But for the community to understand, the, what has happened is, the county is catching up with all the different redistricting that's happening, and so there are, because the ISD 200 boundaries encapsulate Washington County, Goodhue County, Dakota County, there are some, some precincts that exist as they were, there are some precincts that are renumbered but are the same geography. This is not a change of what is and what is not ISD 200. It is simply precinct two, or Ward two, precinct one might be Ward two, precinct two now. And what it is doing is, as that comes through, we're required to then reestablish with the public that here's exactly, if you're in this precinct, here's where you go to, the combined polling locations, of which there are five, are not changing. So it's the same locations, it's just now the redistricting inside of our district has, in some cases, changed, and so we have to officially redo the resolution. That states exactly what I just explained.
Thank you, Superintendent McDowell. At this time, I would ask Clerk Bysel to read the resolution as stated, as shortly as possible. And to the public, it's available, again, on Board Book. Yes. Yes. Right.
I, Becky Bysel, introduced the following resolution and moved it to adoption. A resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. As stated, as resolved as stated.
Do we have a second? I think you have to have a second, and then we'll, and then we'll do a roll call.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second for the stated resolution. I'd ask, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I would ask Clerk Bysel to take a roll call vote.
Becky Bysel, yes. Carrie Tate, oh, Director Tate, sorry, yes. Director Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Malm?
Yes.
Chair Hedin?
Yes.
Director Dresley?
Yes.
And Director Zuzik?
Yes.
Whereupon the said resolution was declared pass, duly passed and adopted.
Thank you, Clerk Bysel. Our next action item is policies for approval. We're going to do this in, in two blocks, because we did move one down from our action items tonight. The first is, I would entertain a singular motion to adopt Policy 417, Chemical Use and Abuse, and Policy 722, Public Data Requests. Those both have had at least two readings at prior meetings and were moved to action item tonight. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion, Director Bysel, second, Director Dresley. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion on the table to approve Policies 417 and Policy 722 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That motion carries unanimously. Our next action item tonight is to act on Policy 623 mandatory summer school instruction, which was moved to an action item from an additional read earlier this evening. At this time, I would entertain a motion in a second to approve that policy.
I would make a motion, including the, the striking of the, of the MSBA and MASAP model policy. Thank you.
I would second that, Davis.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval by Director Zuzik, a second by Director Davis, and to include, the motion includes striking the cross-reference policy, model policies of MSBA and MASB, if they happen to be both in there. Is there any further discussion on this policy? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? The motion carries unanimously. Our next action item, oops, excuse me, I skipped it, is another resolution to accept donations. This time, I would ask Chair Bysel to read that resolution. Clerk? That was so close. I was so close. Well, I mean, I was just so close, sliding out after less than one meeting, I'm just saying. All right, all right, all right. Clerk Bysel.
I, Becky Bysel, introduced the following resolution and moved for its adoption, where a school board policy 706 establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts and donations to the district, whereas Minnesota State Statues, Sections 476.03, states that the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property in accordance with the terms prescribed by the donor, only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. And whereas the reference donations in the District 200 Donations Report from October 2022 to December 22 have been generously donated. Can I get a second for the motion?
Second.
This is a roll call?
All resolutions are roll call.
Okay. All right, so, roll call vote, Director Zuzik?
Yes.
Director Dresley?
Yes.
Chair Hedin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Malm?
Yes.
Director Davis?
Yes.
Director Tate?
Yes.
And Director Bysel, yes. Therefore, be resolved by the Hastings Public School District School Board to gracefully accept these gifts.
Thank you so much. I would like to point out that the scope of these gifts, I'm going to, I'm going to look again, just to remind myself, is from October to December, and we're looking at gifts primarily in cash, but in addition, I think we're of almost $60,000 in a three-month period. It's, it continues to be humbling, absolutely humbling, the degree to which our community, we saw rotary tonight, but many organizations and individuals, alumni, just neighbors, choose to, to support our district above and beyond their taxes with their time and their treasure and their talents. Thank you very, very much. Our next action item is approval of the Spanish immersion experience. This time, I would entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Chair Malm, second by Clerk Bysel. Do we have any discussion on this action? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the Spanish immersion experience signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Are there any abstentions?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is approved by Directors Bysel, Tate, Malm, Hedin, Dresley, and Zuzik, with Director Davis abstaining. Our next action item is approval of our legislative platform. We have a motion to approve the five bullet items, or the five numbered items in the previously draft legislative platform. Do we have a motion in a second for action?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, so I said this was uncommon for a chair to take action and make motions. I would, I've now done two meetings and I'm going to move from that, so apparently it is common for a school board chair to take action. I do believe it is, personally believe that it's important, there are many legislative items with regard to education that are going forward. I do believe that it's important that we have uniform and unanimity as a board voice on this item. And while I may not have the same concerns in the same way that Director Tate does, I'm going to make a motion to amend this item for action by removal, by removal of item number four, with regard to it being a Hastings-supported legislative platform.
I second the amendment.
So, is there, is there any discussion on the amendment? Okay, hearing none, we're going to unpack this by moving on the amendment first and then moving on the previous action. The amendment on the table is to remove from the 2023 Hastings School Board Legislative Platform numbered item four, item number four. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Aye. Oppose, same sign. That amendment carries unanimously. So now we are at a place of taking action on the 2023 Hastings School Board Legislative Platform. The numbered items that remain are one, two, three, and five. If you're watching this at home or watching this later, yet again, that is an attachment to the Board Book, and you can see what those items are. And I anticipate there will be notable, noticeable public communication about these positions going forward. Is there any further discussion on that motion on the table? Director Mom?
No, I appreciate you making that amended motion, so that it is unanimous. I think it is important that we are one voice moving forward, so that it is, when we do talk to legislators, when we do talk to our community, that we are speaking as one group. So I appreciate you doing that, and it's something that I will definitely support.
Is there any further comment? Hearing none. The motion on the table is to approve the 2023 Hastings School Board Legislative Platform numbered items one, two, three, and five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have a topic for future items. At this time, we don't have an attachment, at least in my Board Book. Future meetings. What did I say? Oh, my gosh, I should not listen. I gotta listen to myself. Future meetings are on the website. I know we have a work session coming up on the 8th of February, policy on the 31st, and the 15th, and then we'll have our regular work session, or business meeting on the 22nd. I would like to encourage any board members who have not yet completed a duty poll with an effort to get a retreat on the calendar, to please take the time to do that shortly, so that we can get that scheduled. We want to continue to move forward in building our teamwork and aligning ourselves with all of the work that we have to do in front of us. So, thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a lot of smiling at this table. Motion, Director Dresley, second Clerk Bysel. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
It's, it's an hour.